Good evening. Welcome to the February 16th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. Tonight we have as a special recognition, in November and December of 2015, Boy Scout Joe Pascal and the St. Patrick Catholic Church Troop 365 completed a service project of a major benefit to the city of Troy. Under Eagle Scout candidate Pascal's direction, over 1,320 four-inch adhesive curb markers were attached to the catch basins and curb inlets within the city's vital aquifer protection zones. These markers remind citizens to help protect our drinking water supply by providing a colorful and noticeable reminder to engage in no dumping drains to groundwater. Scout Joe Pascal fulfilled Eagle Scout requirement number five in completing this project, which requires that he plan, develop, and give leadership to others in a service project helpful to any religious institution, school, or community. And this was a great service project that benefits all of us, and I thank these scouts for their service. And also their scout master, Mr. Bill Stoltz, is with us. So if the Boy Scouts and their master, Mr. Bill Stoltz, Joe Pascal, Gavin Trabert, and Jacob Sweeney would please like to come forward. We will recognize you and then ask if you would please lead us in the pledge at the appropriate time. We'll have the invocation, and then you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. First of all, I'd like to recognize them for their service.[127.14][127.14][applause] And we'll have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Dear Father, thank you for each day, each and every day. You have blessed us here on earth. We want to thank you for your tender mercies. Thank you for giving us friends and family to share our joys and sorrows. We ask you to bless our friends, relatives, brothers, and sisters in Christ, and those who are not here with us this evening. Where there is joy, give them continued joy. Where there is pain or sorrow, give them your peace and mercy. Where there is self-doubt, release a renewed confidence. Where there is need, fulfill their needs. Please bless their homes, families, finances, and their goings and their comings. We'd also like to bless these scouts in the endeavors that they go through in the many years that they are in the service organization. And congratulate and please bless Joe Pascal for his efforts and work towards his Eagle Scout badge. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mrs. Sne?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer?
Here.
Mr. Tremblay?
Here.
All members are present.
Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the February 1st meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, February 1, 2016. Minutes were approved. Committee reports. Community Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting the final plat of Section 9 of Nottingham subdivision. Personnel Committee reported regarding two appointments requested by the mayor, and Council approved the appointment of Bill Rozell to the Enterprise Zone Tax and Senate Review Council, and reappointed Jack Baird to the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Committee. No resolutions. Ordinance number 05-2016, final plat Nottingham subdivision, was given first reading. Following comments, Council adjourned 7:10.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Move on to committee reports. The first report tonight is from the Safety and Health Committee, and Chairwoman Robyn Oda.
Thank you, Madam President. On February 8, this committee met to consider recommending an amendment to Chapter 1501 of the Codified Ordinances, the Fire Prevention Code, to require that owners of residential rental properties equip rental properties with carbon monoxide detectors. The fire chief had anticipated that the state of Ohio would adopt the new International Fire Code, which requires the installation of the detector by the owners of rental properties. As Troy, by reference, adopts and enforces the Fire Code, updates approved by the state, that provision will become incumbent on the owners of local residential rental properties at some point. However, based on safety concerns, and for the fire department to be able to work towards enforcement by education on the subject, the fire chief had requested that Troy's code be amended to include the provision for the CO2, for the carbon monoxide detectors in residential rentals using the language of the International Fire Code. The majority report is as follows. The other signs support the recommendation that carbon monoxide detectors be required for residential rental units as discussed herein. We recognize that certain items can be set forth in lease agreements, but in the interest of tenants renting homes that have safety features, we recommend that legislation be prepared to amend ordinance Chapter 1501 to include provisions related to requirements for carbon monoxide detectors in residential rental units. We further support not deferring action until the state includes the provision in the next state fire code. So that the penalty provision inadvertently deleted is reinstated, we recommend that it be included in the legislation. To ensure immediate compliance, we support emergency legislation. Respectfully submitted, Safety and Health Committee members John Twilliger and Brock Heath. The minority report is as follows. It is my position that this issue should not be legislated, but is a matter that should be clearly defined in writing in any lease agreement between a landlord and renter, setting forth the responsibilities of each. Therefore, I do not support legislation to amend ordinance Chapter 1501 to include provisions related to carbon monoxide detectors as proposed by city staff. Respectfully submitted, myself, Robyn Oda, as Chair.
Are there any questions from council on the committee reports?
Yes, Madam President, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Schwizer?
I saw on the report that this is a first-degree misdemeanor, and then subsequent violations would be a fourth degree. What are the definitions of a first-degree misdemeanor? What is that penalty?
Well, a first-degree misdemeanor, and I believe it actually is, the first one's a minor misdemeanor for the first offense, meaning that there is no, the court cannot impose jail. The maximum penalty on something like that would be $150 fine. And normally, and it's my understanding, you can address your questions to the chief, but we are seeking, it's my understanding, seeking voluntary compliance. The penalty section would just be utilized for people that have been informed of the law, and they choose not to follow it. But, for instance, if they chose not to follow it after being advised of that, the minor misdemeanor is available. A fourth-degree misdemeanor would be something that would occur only upon a conviction of a minor misdemeanor, and that's punishable up to 30 days in jail on a $250 fine. And again, that tool is utilized to simply, the court has a lot more, in a conviction for a fourth-degree misdemeanor, they can do things such as probation, they can do other, either punitive or remedial action that they can't do with a minor misdemeanor, which is only punishable by a fine.
How is that, how do we come to a first-degree minor misdemeanor, or is that something that's set by Ohio Revised Code, or how do we come to that?
Well, the penalty sections in here was, and the chief can follow up, there was some discussion that there needed to be some sort of remedy in there if there were landlords that just chose not to follow this, that, one, it's my understanding that the fire department is going to address this by education first. There's not going to be any formal inspections or anything like that. But there could be situations where people just say, "We disagree with this, and we're not going to follow it." So there was a discussion to put in there some sort of progressive punishment type of thing. So if the warning doesn't work, then there would be a relatively small fine. And then if there was continued disregard of the obligations, then the court could step in and impose something more serious to, quite frankly, get their attention so that they do comply with the law.
But how would the city discover that a landlord has not, would that be, the onus of that be on the tenant? The whole city in sake of, I don't have a carbon monoxide detector in my house.
And it's my understanding there's not going to be any formal inspection provision with relating to this, but obviously, there are many laws on the book that we have that there are no formal inspection things. And some of those are based on complaint-based situations where it might be a tenant, it could be a contractor working in there, you know, and maybe it comes to light. And then, you know, my understanding from the enforcement side of it, just on our preliminary discussions with the fire department, is, is, "Hey, you don't have a carbon monoxide detector. You need to comply with the city code with regard to this. Please let us know within three weeks or a month whether or not you have that installed yet." And then there may be some follow-up at that point in time.
Okay.
I don't know.
Chief, do you have further? Do you have further comment?
I do, Madam President. Along with what Mr. Kerber was saying, it's no different really than in 2011 when smoke detectors became something that wasn't grandfathered. Prior to 2011, smoke detectors were recommended, and they were required in all-new construction, but in 2011, the Ohio Fire Code says, "Hey, there is no more grandfather clause for smoke detectors." So it's the same type of compliance, it's the same type of, usually we get reports. The biggest thing I could see where there could be some criminal things, you know, we would concur with our oral director and also with the prosecutor, is when we find a home fire where there was severe negligence on part of the owner, not so much the tenant, then that becomes an issue. If there, you know, one of the fatal fires that we had this past year, there was some issues with the smoke detector, but the property owner had insured, and he actually had paperwork that the smoke detector was installed, they did periodic inspections of that, so, you know, that's one of the stats that the NFPA wants to collect on data, especially on fatal fires. It would be the same type of compliance with this carbon monoxide, is when we get notification, what we do is we have this program now, since we had that tragic incident from last year, is we do have a fund that's set up, and we do have carbon monoxide detectors that we pass out. We just don't have enough to, you know, supply for every rental property in the city of Troy. We'd be overwhelmed the first day. So we've been doing a good job of trying to police and get to the people who actually can't afford and need one of those. We don't want to, and through that process, we've encountered a lot of property owners that have rental units that is on board with this legislation, that said, "Hey, you know, this is a good thing." And then when they read it in the newspaper, we've gotten some additional calls and say, "Hey, what do you recommend?" And you can recommend anywhere from like $15, and you can spend upwards to $100 for interconnected. But it's a compliance issue, is we're really, you know, we're going to educate the community. We've been doing that since last February of the hazards of CO, but also how to mitigate CO. But it's an ongoing effort, but we're not going to go out door-to-door. We do have a database in the city of Troy for landlords, and we're going to get them this information. But it's, this is a good piece of legislation to move forward to ensure just a safety step for these people. And the International Code currently has the exact legislation that's being proposed tonight. The language is the same. And currently on file for the city of Troy, if that would pass tomorrow, if the state would adopt that, it would stay the same. So, you know, that could happen, whether tonight's legislation passes or fails, we could still be in two months from now initiating this. So we just wanted to get a jump on it, the same, the same language that's international. Hope that helps with the compliance thing, is education.
So we are not grandfathering any homes right now that are rentals that have, that don't have a CO2 detector? Is that correct?
If this is passed tonight, as the emergency legislation is proposed correctly, there would be no grandfather clause.
How long would a landlord have for compliance with the law?
Again, we won't know until we have somebody call us. I mean, we're going to do our education efforts, but there is no inspection process. We just don't have the resources to follow up with that database and go out and knock on doors. But, you know, we have fielded calls from tenants, but I don't think it's going to be overwhelmingly, you know, that we can't keep up with. You know, we're going to update the website, we're going to do all the means necessary, but there is no, it's self-police with the property owners themselves. Occasionally, we'll get a call from a tenant saying, "Hey, can I have a free carbon monoxide detector?" We take them through a list of questions. Do you rent? Who's your landlord? And then we follow up with them.
Mr. Kerber, is it correct to believe that since this is emergency, it goes into effect immediately upon signing, or upon approval tonight and signature? So it would actually go into effect immediately? Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct, Madam President. Well, I mean, upon signature of the mayor and publication. But so there would be, usually, typically, there's a few days lag, but it would be pretty soon.
Yeah, so, as soon as they can, you know, as soon as they can possibly get a man.
And this would match up with the Ohio Fire Code. If it passes, that they wouldn't have a grandfather clause in there either. It's automatic.
Correct. Just like in 2011, when they adopted the most recent ICC International Code, it was right there.
This is what.
Any further questions? Mr. Phillips?
Chief, part of your education process will be either contacting via mail, robocall, or in person, all of the landlords that are on your existing database. Is that correct?
That's correct. The first step would be the letter notification, but also some news media outlets to try to get all the information out there. And every time we go do a public presentation, which we do several months, we include the carbon monoxide.
And documentation is always followed up on, so that at least an initial informational thing was put out there so that you could attach that to the file on every property that is noticed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
The next reports are from the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, and Chairperson Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. This committee met on February 8 regarding recommending authorizing a professional services agreement with Choice One Engineering Corporation for the design of the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2 at a cost not to exceed $120,000. The project's scope will include the replacement of curb, gutter, sidewalk, storm sewers, and roadway reconstruction on North Market Street between Fossway and Stonebridge Avenue, and a traffic study related to the traffic signals in that project area. The city is responsible for the design cost. An application was approved by the Ohio Public Works Commission, or OPWC, to fund part of the construction cost. The recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with Choice One Engineering Corporation for the design of the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2 in an amount not to exceed $120,000. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Sne, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report? You may continue, Mr. Phillips.
Our second item on the same date of February 8 was to consider an ordinance of assessment associated with Phase 8 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. Phase 8 work has been completed and is generally an area east of the railroad, north of Main Street, west of Melbury Street, and south of the Great Miami River. The notice advising of the completion of the project and availability of final assessments has been done. The next step in the process is for council to enact the ordinance of assessment. And it was the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the final assessment for Phase 8 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mrs. Sne, and myself as Chair.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. The last committee report this evening is from the Utilities Committee, and Chairman Doug Tremblay.
Thank you, Madam President. Utilities Committee met on February 8. Members Twilliger and Twiss met regarding the new .75 million gallon water tower to be located on West Stanfield Road in the extra-high-service area. The design of the project has been completed, and an estimate cost of $2,750,000 provided. Construction of this tower was a recommendation of the Water Master Plan, and will stabilize the water pressure in the area and support growth within the extra-high-service area. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction of the new .75 million gallon water tower to be located in the extra-high-service area at a cost not to exceed $2,750,000. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Twilliger, Mr. Twiss, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report? Thank you, Mr. Tremblay.
You're welcome.
We now open the meeting to citizen comments. There's a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our timekeeper. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Bob Lufman. I'm an attorney here in Troy. I'm here on behalf of Jean Bishop, who is the grandmother and adoptive mother of the Bishop and Jones girls that died last February. She's asked me to come speak in favor of the CO2 legislation that you folks are considering today. I think this case is a perfect example of why you need to enact this. First of all, I want to compliment your police department. They did a spectacular job of investigating this situation, and hired experts immediately, and did interviews, and did very thorough reports. So they did a great job. This furnace in this house was so old, it was almost impossible to date, but we are reasonably certain that at the time this happened, this furnace was 76 years old. And I call it a furnace, but it was really a giant space heater that only blew hot air out of one room. So in the winter, when it was cold, Ms. Jean and her four kids had to all sleep on the floor and the couch, huddled around this one space heater. There was no ventilation system, there were no floorboard heaters. This was the sole heat source of the 76-year-old furnace. At the time of this incident, and I've passed around some pictures of the furnace in the report from Troy Plumbing and Heating, the filter was 100% blocked. The flue and chimney were 100% blocked by brick and mortar. And in fact, this was a gas furnace with a mortar chimney, and if you know anything about furnaces, that type of exhaust erodes the mortar, and it was a disaster waiting to happen. The way it works, the chimney, brick, and mortar were going to collapse and erode because of the gas. And the air inlet was also restricted. And contained in the police report by the landlord's own admission, they never serviced this furnace after they bought it, despite the fact it was 76 years old, and looked like it belonged in the museum. They never serviced it before they rented it. They never serviced it in the three years during this rental agreement. They never changed the filter during the three years, nor did they require the tenant to change it. The Revised Code requires landlords to provide safe venting and heating. I think this is a logical extension of that. I understand and respect the minority report that this is something that people should negotiate, but I would say in the real world, I don't think that's very practical. Where do we put the 19-year-old single mom with a baby who's trying to find the cheapest place? Are we going to look at her and say, "You know, you're on your own. You better know about this, you better be able to negotiate it"?
You're close to time.
Okay. In my case, it was a 68-year-old grandma with four kids. For the cost of five days' rent, $90, they could have inspected this furnace and found out it was unsafe, and unfortunately, these kids would still be alive today. Not every landlord puts their tenant first. Not every landlord is dedicated to a safe rental unit. Sometimes in the democratic process, where it is uneven, I think you need to step in and provide some safeguards. Really, it's, we're talking about protecting the poor and the disadvantaged, in whether or not we're going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lufman.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments related to agenda items this evening?
Mr. Carter, 1210 South Clay Street, Troy, Ohio. It's a shame that those kids died, but I think some of the responsibility even goes up to Upper Valley Medical Center. If they would have diagnosed the grandmother properly, those kids may still be alive. They've had pneumonia. And from my understanding, she went in there with soot all over her face and everything else. So, you know, I mean, you know, we're putting a lot of pressure on the landlords all the time, and it looks like Troy doesn't really want rentals in Troy. And I'm just wondering how many landlords actually live in Troy? Does anybody have any stat on that? I know in a lot of these bigger units, they're all out of state, and it's kind of hard to get those people to even respond. So what's the problem? You know, I mean, well, what are we going to do about it? Now, next thing is, my thoughts is on the flood plains, they're on the agenda for tonight. And I'm wondering how, if you pass the rezoning, how that's going to keep the land from flooding? It just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, you're not supposed to build in a flood zone. And just by rezoning it, makes it accessible to be housed and built property on? It just doesn't make sense to me. I just, I still don't understand even how Treasure Island got it. You know, it's in a flood zone. I don't know how that happened. But, you know, I mean, it is what it is, and, you know, if anybody has any questions or comments, I'd appreciate it, or if not, I'll go sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments? We'll move on then to resolutions, and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R. 7, 2016.
Resolution number R. 7, 2016. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Choice One Engineering Corporation of Sidney, Ohio, for the design of the North Market Street Improvement Project Phase 2. The cost of the agreement not to exceed $120,000. First reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Schwizer?
Sorry. Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twiss to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twiss to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We have several ordinances on the agenda tonight. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 052016.
Ordinance number 052016, ordinance accepting the final plat of Nottingham Subdivision, Section 9, and dedicating a ride of white. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, second reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Tremblay to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 062016.
Ordinance number 062016, ordinance amending Chapter 1501 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, related to carbon monoxide alarms and penalty provisions and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
No.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 072016.
Ordinance number 072016, ordinance levying assessments for Phase Eight of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. Uh, this is the final step in this sidewalk project. This is the first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr., um, Tremblay, excuse me, to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 082016.
Ordinance changing the zoning of part of Outlot 436, parcel D.08100722 and parcel D.08100730 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from M.2 Light Industrial District and R.4 Single Family Residence District to the zoning of M.2 Light Industrial District. Uh, this will have a public hearing at the next meeting. This has been recommended for approval at the, by the Troy Planning Commission, and this was requested by the Hobart Institute of Welding Technology.
And this will go to another reading, and the public hearing will be followed by a committee meeting at a future date. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 092016.
Ordinance number 092016, ordinance changing the zoning of Vinlot 10577 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of A.2 and F.1 to the city zoning of F.4 Single Family Residence District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission.